Twenty second at five thirty one P M. I'd like to call the Southwest Supervisory Union Board of Directors meeting to order at five thirty one P M. First on the agenda is public comments. Do you have any public comments? Maybe somebody here electronically, they should unmute themselves and announce. See anyone raising their hand or unmuted themselves, but only one of me on the meeting that I don't recognize. Okay. So, moving on from public comments, item two on the agenda is finance, Treasury's report, needing to accept, or motion to accept Treasury's report. I got a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, item, the second action under item two on the agenda is interactive display, purchase panels authorization. Don't have much information on that, so.
Adam, Adam Souza, Director of I T is here to explain that. And I apologize, that was a last minute amendment to the agenda. I give up paper copies if anybody needs. Good evening, Adam.
Good evening, everyone. So, I guess I'll just kick it off with a summary of what this is. So, the school came and asked the tech team to look into adding interactive panels to the elementary classrooms. So, this is a project that spans across all of the elementary classrooms, including Arlington, where we did an R F P through the month of April. It started in late March and then was wrapped up in April to get interactive panels quoted out for every single classroom across the S U. So, what we were looking at is seventy-five inch screens in every classroom, and then there was one eighty-six inch display per building. Eighty-six inches is the size that you're looking at now. And through the competitive bid process, you know, there were four vendors that stood out with products. The top three were close in price. But at the end of the day, it's it's a simple hardware flip, so our recommendation would be to go with the best price. The vendor that did win on price is a vendor that the school has worked with for who knows how long, ten years plus. They've provided products to the schools and we've never had an issue with them. They've been very responsive in resolving, you know, any issues that we have had, but we also really haven't had issues with them. So, our recommendation, we can move forward with the View Sonic, which is the manufacturer that was proposed by Gov Connection, who is the seller of that product.
That this is a, it's an ARF funded purchase, one of the last large purchases we'll be making with those funds to support some of the curriculum that was implemented over the past couple of years through recovery. So, it's supporting that in all schools.
Just point clarity, I thought I heard at first there was something, it was the elementary school buildings or elementary school classrooms, but that, but then I also heard every.
All, all, all schools. I'm not sure about Arlington Memorial, if they.
Arlington has heavily invested over the last five years into a specific manufacturer, Smart Tech. So, our recommendation would be to stay with that manufacturer for them. So, we did a separate R F, R F P for Arlington, but the overall project is covering all of the elementary schools. And then we did get two panels for the middle school and we requested two panels for the middle school and two panels for the high school. Just so we're starting to bring this level of technology into those buildings as well.
We will come back with the actual Arlington authorization because they're federal funds. We have to have your authorization to move forward before we can proceed with that.
So, is that why it's, in the case of this, where it's going to the elementary, this is an elementary school project, but it's because it's federal funds, it has to come through this board?
Wow, so it's both to U E S D and, and, and Anthony. But yes, the federal funds are maintained at the S level.
From, from the classroom impact, these, these devices are going to allow students to wirelessly connect with the and share their work. Obviously, teachers will be able to use them as digital whiteboards and, and share those notes out via Google Classroom, the applications that are currently being used. But it also addresses, you know, some of the issues in some of the older buildings with sound, so it's also more cost, doing the interactive panels like this. Like what you're looking at right now is a more cost-effective solution sometimes than, you know, doing a projector, the pull-down screen along with, you know, the hardware that needs to plug into the projector to allow for wireless casting, video conferencing like this, and then also the, the implementation of speakers. So, the, the interactive panel kind of is an all-in-one solution for that, that we've seen work really well in a classroom setting. So, it, it's giving teachers more tools. We have wireless docu, or we have document cameras that went with this as well as an accessory. So, teachers can take, you know, handwritten work and kind of blow it up and expand it up on the, the whiteboard for students.
I have one question. And teachers would be trained in this, how to use this technology, so that can just dump it and then have that and figure it out?
Yeah, so the vendor or the manufacturer has offered to do training, and then they also have an online self-paced training portal that teachers will have access to, but will work with. The district has is educational, like people dedicated to teaching teachers how to use this, so we will follow up with professional development, but just, just like any new technology, it's, it's layered. So, you have the initial teaching and then just the constant reinforcement. You have early adopters, and then you'll have people who don't adopt as quickly.
Does this replace the smart board? Yes.
Yeah, so some, some buildings have a a smart board that a projector projects to. This, this would replace that.
I just was wondering, Adam, with the technology that's in Arlington, are you intending to replace everything that's there, or is this just allocating funds for ones that are due to be replaced?
It's for ones that are due to be replaced. So, the, the expected lifespan on this equipment is ten years. So, with, with the majority of the equipment in Arlington being around that five-year mark, I couldn't make the recommendation to say to replace it. And it is, maintaining this stuff is in the tech budget and the tech plan. So, what using these S R funds is doing is it's fast-tracking S V S U's implementation of this.
I mean, you came and talked to our board specifically about this, so. You may have resources, I mean, if Arlington's using it, there may be some teacher resources to help with that training.
I just hate to see teachers given equipment.
Oh, yeah.
Fast-growing media forwards.
That's not gonna happen.
Yeah. They can never use, once you've said how to use it.
Yeah.
So, I just want to make sure we're using it wisely.
Yep.
So, what we're looking for is an authorization to forward with the R F P?
To award, or Gov Connection.
Award to what, what, I'm sorry.
Gov, Gov Connection.
Gov Connection, to, to award the, the contract to Gov Connection. I'll make the motion to award the contract to Gov Connection.
Second the motion.
Any discussion, further discussion? Right, all those in favor, please, obviously, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, item three on the agenda is operations. Looks like we have two items. The first one on there is the food service contract.
So, yeah, so no, everyone. So, on the agenda is the extension of the food service contract. It is with the Abbey Group and it's the second year in a five-year bidding cycle. It, it really is a formality at this point, but we need it, we need to have you guys vote and approve on it annually, so. Before we make a motion, do you have any questions about it?
Ray.
I, um, usually we, since, I certainly was here for that vote, but I don't remember the original contract size and the metrics for the second year, the five-year, for renewable providers, the second year, et cetera, so would have been nice to have those in the discussion, because it's a little complex in terms of the after contract, so, so I told them per month.
Per month with the, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can certainly get it for you.
And this is for all the schools in?
In our L E A, yep.
Including Arlington?
Correct, yep, it's free breakfast and lunch for.
Plus this building, this office. But you don't know, I mean, how much of the entries was it?
Oh, the allowable by the State of Vermont statute, I think it was two point five percent. I'll have to get that.
I'm not gonna oppose it.
Done.
Everything, it's, it's very structured by U S D A, so we really don't have
Yeah, no.
wiggle room with it. It's like the, the A O E, child nutrition basically tells us what they'll allow us to do. It's just basically going through the motions of every.
Well, I mean, you have a free, you have the contract, it's scheduled for up to five years renewal. I just don't remember the numbers that we started with. To refresh everybody's memory, it was previous to here, we voted on it.
It's based on a per plate contract.
Sorry?
Price now, so it was restructured from what we had previously when we actually had management fee in prior years, the, the agency. I don't know if it was an A O E decision or if it was a U S D A regulation.
But this is Jantronics, this is not.
Oh, this is, this is the Abbey Group.
Abbey, yeah.
We're on food service first.
Yeah, even though the order is reversed on your agenda, yes.
Did I, did I give you something? No, 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 no.
No, I think.
Raising the Jantronics.
Okay.
First is the food service.
Right. Okay, yeah, no, item, the first item was the, the food service contract.
Yeah.
So, the, the action request is to approve the food service contract to the Abbey Group. Yes.
Extension for one year.
Extension for one year, what? What's the reasoning for just one year?
U S D A regulations, they only allow us to, to contract for a year at a time, but we can basically agree that we will review it on an annual basis. This board will review it on an annual basis, and we can commit to a five-year period before we have to go out to bid again. And the bidding process is pretty intense.
How is that?
Yeah, when did we do that last?
About, about last year, it was, this is great, it was during COVID, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
For year four, it's a contract.
And there was a whole, there was a
This is the year.
Food Service Committee is studying those almost reviews.
And the, the the R F P that goes out is multiple pages. I'm gonna wanna say probably in excess of a hundred pages because of all the U S D, U S D A regulations that have to be included, and then the responses that come back are binders full of information that committee has to kind of sift through and go through the, the matrix of how they're gonna score everything, and then the committee decides on making the recommendation to the board. But that's the process that we went through.
I thought it's in the middle of the conference, so we're not changing ours.
So, this isn't part of the, the actual contract, but I just wanted to put it out there. I'm still hearing rumblings from people that the last block of lunch at the high school is still running up. And then, and I know we brought that up at the M A U meeting, it's not quite, it's a little, but I'm hearing that it's still, I don't, I'm not there, so I don't know for sure. I just have, I don't know, school has friends that have mentioned it to him, so.
Certainly discussed at the high school, but that's not been brought to our attention.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
I was told that was wrong. Yeah, I mean, you mean that it was.
I was told that too.
And it was rare.
And, and not, and not just for my own child, but other high school kids.
Are they running out of food, or are they just running out of B?
Preferred.
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 Well, and it's kind of, from what I'm hearing, so direct quote, it's very slim-kicking.
Okay.
And it's still not enough.
So, there's food, but not.
And it's, but, and it's mainly just in that last, that one, that last lunch area. I mean, I don't know how true it is, let's pick this, but, you know, but it might be something to look into, so.
Absolutely. You know, yesterday, the day before was a whole pork poutine. I would imagine that ran out pretty quick, so let me.
Okay, so, the, the action request is to extend the food service contract to the Abbey Group for one year, as per the contract that we have with them. May I have a motion for that?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second that motion, second by Jett. Any further discussions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, under operations, letter B, Jantronics, contract extension.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for asking a question about the contract, the extension. We negotiated with Jantronics to extend for another year. Ray, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
And they gave us a price, a monthly price for all of their services, and so we asked them to break out S V S U and S V S U E S D. And so, the, the, the one that you got was everything encompassed, and the one that's just for this building, the contract that's just for this building and for Division Street, for the S V S U, is, that is up on the website. I can get you the the number, but it's twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
Twenty-eight, twenty-five forty-one a month.
For, for all, all build, all buildings?
Just, just, just for the central office and Division Street. So, this building is.
Twenty-eight, oh, sorry.
One, two thousand. Two thousand hundred.
I get it.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Or, or, yeah.
I don't understand.
We're gonna come into a different business.
So, what, what was originally in the pocket? They had incorrectly, Jantronics had rolled everything together, including the schools that are serviced by S V U E S D schools.
Yeah, just for, for a little background, I sent a note at like two o'clock this afternoon that said, what are we, what are we approving for twenty, because in that one, it was twenty-six thousand a month. I said, what are we approving for twenty-six thousand a month? And that's when we came to realize that what we're approving is for, is the twenty-eight hundred.
Yes.
For the, for the janitorial services in this building and Division Street.
Correct.
And how is this different from our previous contract?
This is level, this is level funded, so it currently is.
Yeah, we negotiated with Jantronics, because, you know, they understand that the State of Vermont allows a certain percentage increase. And we went through an exercise with them to look at square footage of buildings, and over the course of the last year, we've removed enough carpets and replaced with luxury vinyl tile or other materials, so that they don't have to spend as much time during the summer cleaning those. So, we negotiated a level contract, so what we paid last fiscal year, we'll pay this coming fiscal year, with no increase.
So, there, this references just services to S V S U?
Correct, so.
Does it actually say the two facilities in here?
The original contract identifies that. That for twenty eighteen. So, we're still, you know, we're still operating within the statutory, statutory guidelines where, you know, we have had increases over the years, but we haven't exceeded that thirty percent of the original contract amount, so thanks to Holly, no increase next year, so.
Great, so can we have a motion to approve the contract extension to Jantronics for one year?
I'll approve the motion first.
And second? Second, by Ray, any further discussion? None, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Next. Item four on the agenda is policies. First up, letter A, policy number five zero eight zero, dress code policy and a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt five zero eight zero.
We have a second?
Okay.
Okay, any discussion?
I'll go back to all my original complaints. I wish it was more detailed, for we had the, you know, what's in the student handbooks, that's a reference. Because it is pretty thin on what is subject, what's not subject, read this policy. If it comes to a complaint of board, we have to go by this policy, that was in the teacher's handbooks. So, I wish it was more detailed, what's allowed, not allowed, for our support.
But that's the administrative team's responsibility to draft up their admin regs for their buildings.
Yes, but when it comes to us as a committee, if it was passed, the principals to us, we have to go by the policy. You don't have to say anything what the principal's doing, yeah. But we only approve the policy. Parent complaints are kids being targeted for their posts, if they come to us as a board, we have the policy. So, we stand on the policy, not with the principal's different kind of building. So, I wish there's more meat to this policy.
Right. I sense it's, it makes noises about honoring.
Honoring your preferences, but what are those preferences? Can I wear my AK forty-seven, I tell people gun shirt to school? You know, the principal's face, say, no, but we have to honor that based on our policy, because that's the kids' preference. I wish we had more detail, more meat to the policy.
Unless we've been this policy into my that will fall to the individual schools.
Yeah. Yeah, but we don't know what those guidelines are, and they make it after this policy.
This was kickback to policy the first time, exactly, so it seems like nothing's been changed. I sat with that committee that day and it was a challenging conversation, because we all want the things that the admin regs are going to address in the policy. Is it possible, and Superintendent Coquin, I ask you this, are we able to maybe table this so that we can get a conclusive list of? You can table it, but it'll do is push it back to the policy committee. You already expressed what they, what they said, so. And, and you.
Part of you members. Would you mind expanding on what the tenor of the conversation was?
Yeah, it's basically that you're setting the policy and allowing for the administrative regs to dictate what goes on on a school-by-school basis. And while I understand and I'm okay with that, I think it should nonetheless be included in the policy, each school's administrative regs, so that it's something clear, which brings up, you know, the event, the, you know, possible future event that chess speaks about. We won't even know what the regs are.
Are there other instances where, well, I'm sure there are, but I guess the question is, how is it handled where administrative regs are going to be more detailed and what is actually written into the policy?
I know.
We don't, we don't even acknowledge there's administrative regs in here, in this policy.
I think, you know, if we could get the language in there that at least, you know, references the administrative regs.
Yes.
So, I honestly don't think that from being in those meetings, that you're gonna get what that language is, and as our attorney explained, two of the reasons for that, that how discriminatory previous dress code language was, which is where it got paired back to this, put an administrative reg, so.
For me, this is.
Unless there's a significant change in the makeup of the policy committee. I think you just.
Funny to me, to me, all parents say, my kid's a lagerer than sure, because of this policy, it's individual preference. And we can't do darn thing about it. So, you know, these new G D shirts in school, tech school shirts.
I don't agree with that, because it says all students are entitled to a safe environment, and if there's something that's offensive, that would not be safe to someone. And, and until there is a policy passed, we're not gonna write the admin regs, because that's the practice. You pass a policy, then we put a committee here, like we have a committee administrators meeting right now for the, working on the cell phone policy, to do the administrative regs for that. So, we can bring that back to the board to see if that.
As a board, we could also bring it back to the agenda to discuss again, if we want to see the administrative regs. That would work for me, so as not to bring it back, so as not to delay it any further.
Other districts put pretty detailed stuff in their policy. They've been approved this year, especially up in Arlington, because those larger school districts, they have language in their policy.
So, I suggest you go to, if it goes back to policy committee, you come and you hear what our attorney advised the policy committee, meaning the language of this. We have a motion and a second. To adopt the votes, yes.
Certainly discussed.
And we've discussed, so why don't we, all those in favor?
I'll give it a go.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. And any abstentions?
Me.
Online?
An online?
Yes, Jessica's here.
Jessica.
Sorry.
No, no problem. But how did you vote, Jessica?
Aye.
Aye. So, we had.
Three ayes.
Three ayes or four ayes?
Four ayes.
I was an aye, so, one, two, plus Jessica. We had five ayes, one, one abstention, one abstention, and one, no, one no.
It's two abstentions.
It's five, one, two.
Five, one, two, just, just thank you, because I wanted to make sure, Richard. I think that's good feedback, though, for future conversations at the policy committee. And certainly come back to us if you would.
Yeah. Or. I will bring it up to mind. It's a little, I was a lot vocal of that one, but I understand where we are, what, you know, the trajectory that it needs to go to get back to where we want to be.
I'm seeing those administrative regs, because, you know, it's very important that we allow the students to express, we, we allow expression, and it's also very important to have a safe environment. Item B, under policies, is number five one two zero, concussion management. Need a motion to adopt that policy. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on five one two zero concussion management? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? And any abstentions?
Obstience.
So, we have, everybody was an aye with the exception of one abstention, which was Jeff Lee. Okay, item five on the agenda is consent agenda. Within that, there's article or number one, meeting, our minutes from the last meeting, two warrants, three leave of absence, four retirements, five resignations, and six nominations. If that, if there's nobody who objects, I would ask that we move those all together in one action.
I'll make the motion in one action.
We have a second?
A second.
Okay, all the, or any discussion?
So, the motion is to approve the consent agenda, correct?
Yeah.
Just, just one pointed information on Madison.
Just, just one pointed information on um Madison, but Barrett. Who is the applicant? Was interviewed by Laura and by Richard Roy. So Bennett, tell me just.
Just note for the record, her last name is misspelled.
Any other discussion? Alright, so um all those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And any abstentions? Item six on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Evening, Professor Koppina.
School board's been operating under COVID regulations as far as how we can meet and uh those are expiring uh June thirtieth. You may have seen something in your school board memo we received at superintendent's too. Nothing will change for how we conduct our meetings. Uh under COVID operations that expired uh June thirtieth, you could have had a complete remote meeting. We have not done that. We did during the depths of COVID. But once we moved here and put in this interactive system, we're able to do hybrid meetings, which will be the new requirement. So like we have always operated under the standard. Except in the now deeper past COVID, one person has to be physically present at the announced location. So we will, that's, if you look at our agenda, we announce a physical location. We have that meeting said, you know, at least the superintendent or an administrator is here. We, we will continue to operate that and we have to offer uh electronic meetings, a hybrid. But there's a member here, you have a public, you have TVs here, electronically. For board subcommittees and emergency board committee meetings, you can still do a full physical, uh a full uh remote meeting. But I don't see where, maybe in the case of emergency meetings that we can get everybody here. But because of the way we have our, our um, our Zoom setup for meetings and with this physical location, uh I don't see us doing anything other than a hybrid. Maybe if you still want to have a meeting in the height of a bad snowstorm and everybody joined remotely, so that could be a board subcommittee meeting or emergency meeting. But our full meetings has, starting uh July one, it has to be a hybrid meeting with an announced physical location, which you hope we're doing anyway. So I just, you saw that and we're, you know, concerned. Uh we have been in compliance with the new regulations for at least two years.
Announced physical location, is there any requirements as to percentage of the board or number?
No. Is it, does one board member have to be there? Because that's administration part of the board. We have work about administration here. Is it a board member having to present? You, because you need a board member to be at the meeting. Otherwise, there is no board members represented at the location of the meeting.
That, that's not how I read it, but I, I'll, I'll take more time and look at it, that there has to be, uh it needs to designate and staff a physical location for public participation. So staff.
But and administration, I mean, I think you'd need a board member there.
Again, we can, we'll, I'll just, I'll with our attorney, that's not how I read it. As long as we have somebody who can physically let the public come in and, and be present, but I'll verify that would be. That's, that would make sense to me. The the agent of education came to do an onsite review this week with us. So there was a lot of preparation with administration to get into it. The H R education sent a representative for an onsite monitoring visit to review the status of our continuous improvement plan. Why I'm telling this committee because it involves both MAU school and uh Union Elementary School District. So the middle school is part of this continuous improvement plan process as well as panel elementary, Molly Stark Elementary and Bennington Elementary School. And it may, remember, we told you that this came with a significant amount of title money over three years. It's nine hundred forty nine thousand five hundred twenty two dollars uh each year for the next three years. It may fluctuate a year, two or three because it's title money, so it's depending on what the federal government funds the title for. So uh the purpose of the visit this week was to meet with the principals of those schools, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the director of curriculum instruction assessment. Provide updates linked to the status of the district and the goals starting beginning of the twenty four, twenty five school year. Because this started late into this school year. So how are we going to improve the performance of those schools? We also discussed future plans for the comprehensive supports that funding will be available for these schools. The positions that are either currently in place or considered to support student outcome, outcomes, uh behavior coach, board certified behavior analyst, social worker, and a math coach. Other things that we heard, particularly at the middle school, they put enhanced sound system in classrooms. I don't know how many you've seen this, but we're hearing such positive increase from, it's a speaker system in a classroom with this uh, the uh teacher having.
Yeah.
Yeah. And uh an interesting footnote is uh the principal of MAU, middle school Chris McGuire uh talks about, he was challenged to use it at his faculty meeting and how it uh, he felt that it uh everyone could hear better and leaning in the back of the room and it, and it was a different form. You should do. It could be more taco systems in this room too for that too. So uh I've seen in classrooms at Molly Stark and Bennington Elementary and it, it's, you know, it's a game changer for some of our students that we can ensure that they learn. But the focus of this is English language, arts, and math. Um and, you know, the things that principals presented their plans, the agency of education. One consistent is trying to uh protect a time for math and protect a time for reading. The last part of the monitoring uh visit focused on collaboration strategy between the agency of education and the SBSU. I will point you that they were pleased with the extensive plans that the principals presented on each of their schools, each principal presented to the agency of education, and they will be back again. So that, this is an ongoing, it's a free year, free year process. I am also completing along with the assistant superintendent, all end of the year goal meetings with each principal and director. Starting point, mid-year cycle, and so the end of the year cycle, we only have a couple more uh directors to meet with. This, you've heard it, but it finished repeating. So there begins the last day of school for Arlington will be six thirteen for students and six fourteen for staff. The rest of the schools of the SBSU, Friday, six fourteen for students, Monday, six seventeen for staff, Tuesday, six eighteen for teachers. All student last days will be an early release day or, actually not a half day. And I mentioned it last uh month here, we're continuing to have interviews with equity coordinator. We have some uh promising candidates and I hope that I may have a candidate for your budget June meeting. And we continue planning for administrative's uh summer lease, uh summer leadership academy. And as I mentioned last month, the topic is uh legal, a legal academy for education law for uh, for administrators. We will have a guest from the education presenting, our school attorney will be there, will include HHB training and data collection training uh for all administrators. That's a two day event in early August. It's, plans are, I'm pleased with how the plans coming along for that. It takes quite a bit to get that, also get commitments from presenters and uh topics and that, that is my report.
Um for, uh let's, sorry, I was. Next on the agenda is the chair's report. I wanted to just touch base um last week. Last week? Last week, uh, uh board chairs, May thirteenth, board chairs got together um for the first time, I think, maybe, never, who knows ever, but the first time in, in at least many years. Um so that was uh Chris Murphy uh from the SBU ESD, myself from the SU, Paul from Arlington.
Stephanie.
Stephanie Mulligan from the MAU. Um got together with Jim and Laura. Um we reviewed some of the goals that had been presented to the various boards. The versions of them, versions of which have been presented to various boards from, for as far as academic goals. Um we talked a lot about operational items and what operational goals might be. Admittedly, that was last week and I've been um very busy with work and I haven't retyped all of my notes and thoughts about it or followed up. We did have some takeaways for us to work on. Um I left the conversation saying, wow, we really talked about a lot and we had so much more we could have. So I think we've felt like we'll try and do this as a group of board leaders. More frequently, doesn't have to be, we were, we met for two, two and a half hours, I think. And really talked to, talked a lot. Um but I think what we're going to try and do is have more monthly one hour meetings. It can be via Zoom. But coming together and just talking with administration so that we can um be on the same page and work toward the same thing from, you know, no matter which building, but, you know, for the, for the sake of the uh entire SU and all the buildings within. So, you know, I think what I'm most excited about is our, our main um goals as a board, or one of our main goals as a board is to um provide direction to leadership. Uh evaluate leadership um on various, on the goals and what we would like for, for that person to be working toward. And we can't do it in a vacuum without the perspective of some of the other boards and, and so that's part of what this will help shape. So there'll be more to come as far as tasks or, or updates and tasks for this board, but um I, I hope that we've started a, a trend that will allow for us to more be on, on the same page and be less disconnected from one another and from the various other boards. As we move forward. So more to come, but that's mine for today for tonight. Moving on to item eight on the agenda, any other business?
Yeah, on uh, what's this, Jim, okay. On the reviews by AOE personnel, did they have, offer any comments about progress with the CIPs?
They were very positive comments. They praised the team, the principals for how organized their presentation was. I assume, so I, they were there more to listen. I'm assuming that we will get a written report back from the visit, but that's only the assumption that I made, you made that. But uh there were no authored suggestions or changes. They listened to the presentation, including on the thoroughness of it and on the presentation.
No bigger team was this.
It was be two, one show.
One show.
Our stands the second member was sick that morning, so did not attend. There's, and the, the two members of the team that is, that are assigned to us, has been two resume meetings with them and the principals. This was their physical meeting to come down, they've come down from a, on the other end of this.
There, there were other reviews they did.
Yes, oh yeah, we, yeah. Any other comments or other business? What was that?
Be interesting to know what they say. Their comments about their various business.
Is that standard practice that if they do provide feedback? This is the first time we've been through this process with them and that this money's been available, so it's, and that's one thing that they said too, so uh I don't know, I don't know where it's going. We were expecting, we'd have been told to expect the new secretary of education was going to be coming with them, but then the day before they were told that they'd invited the secretary of education to come, but to a extent, the other member of the team was sitting there. You will get, you know, I there's, so the amount of money that's, that's, it will be a continuous monitoring, but stay on this.
Is the report that we shared from the board, or is just in central office?
Presented to the agency of education.
So the public, you can find it.
You've seen them all at your individual board meetings.
I saw those, the AOE report.
Yeah, you saw, no, you got uh reports on the continuous improvement plan at each schools at your individual board meetings.
And the AOE does their report, we see that, they're in there.
Yeah, yeah, that was what I, yeah, I understand. But I, I'm sitting here telling you, I don't know what that report or feedback written is going to look like. But yeah, it would be a public document. Um any other, other business? Uh item nine on the agenda is FYI, closed. Uh and on sbsu.org is the budget status report, which will be posted, and student enrollment for M.A. It's not on the agenda, but pushing to adjourn.
I'm making the motion.
It must be hot outside because people are like reluctant to.
Join us.
It is. You're going back to.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, thank you everyone.